Just waiting for our text to get things set up, Cindy, and then we'll start. Good afternoon, everyone. Check, check, check. Okay, we're good to go. Thank you, guys. So, I'm gonna call this committee of the whole for Tuesday, March the 18th at 2:00 PM, 202 to order. And before we adopt the agenda, I'll just say that we're holding this meeting on the traditional territory of the Kwamand First Nation. And do I hear any additions or deletions to today's agenda? Counselor Dought?
Yeah, Chair, I've got an item that I'd like to add as a late item. It's just maybe 12 dot one at the end of the today's agenda would be a good place to put that. I've handed out copies to the people in the room.
Yes, we see a copy. Everybody's got a copy, correct? Including staff? Very good. So, this is, are you looking to add this to the agenda, correct?
Yes, I'll make a motion to add it to the agenda as a late item under 12 dot two.
Okay, so we do not need a seconder, this committee of the whole. So Counselor Dought has moved to adopt this motion and add to today's agenda. So Counselor Dought, we'll right ahead, explain your purpose.
Yeah, so this is a motion about the community forest and the division of the proceeds of the community forest and how the determination is made for the annual dividend and how much of that will go to the city and how much of it will go to nonprofits. It plans to involve the new working group that the city has created, to work collaboratively with the city, with the community forest, and with the working group to come to a solution on this thing, which has had some controversy around this table, and I think it's a positive motion. So I'd like to spend some time talking about it. Reason I'd like to talk to it today is that it gives everybody more time to think about the impact this is going to have. Thursday, we'll be talking about the financial plan, and staff is hoping to have first, second, and third readings happen on Thursday. So the more time we can get to debate it, the better off it would be, in my opinion.
Okay, so I would suggest, Counselor Dought, we take just a couple of minutes to have council read through this. I know I haven't read through it yet. I'd like a couple of minutes to do so before we have any further comments or take a vote. So if everybody will just hold tight while we take a good read, then we can proceed from there. Hang tight.
Cindy, do you have a copy of this?
Yes, I'm gonna try and send you one, Counselor Elliott.
Okay, I was gonna say I do not, but I could just listen.
Hey, hold tight, Counselor Elliott. Counselor Dought is trying to send that to you.
It'll be on its way to you, Counselor Elliott.
You're muted now. Counselor?
Apologies. I do have a copy that I received by text.
Yes, before we start asking questions, Your Worship, I just want to check with Counselor Elliott to make sure that she's had sufficient time to digest what's in front of her.
I got it. Thank you so much.
You're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Your Worship, go right ahead.
Sure. Through the chair, my understanding from discussions with our corporate officer is that motions cannot be brought to council of the whole. We get clarity from our corporate officer on that?
Mr. Chair, so further to the email that was sent this morning to all the council in response to questions from Counselor Southcott, my interpretation and recommendation is this is a reconsideration request, and is more properly dealt with as a reconsideration, as I made reference to other proposals put forward by different members of council. And so that's the staff's position, that this is a reconsideration, should fall under reconsideration portions of your procedure bylaw, and that would mean it would need to be raised during a council meeting because the decision was made at a council meeting.
Thank you. That's Counselor Isaacson, and Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so the topic right now is not whether or not we support this motion itself, but it is whether we, whether it's appropriate to add to this agenda as a late item. And so I, my interpretation is similar to the corporate officer. If this motion was passed, whether today or at council, there would be two motions in conflict with one another. And so in order for this to pass, the existing one would need to be rescinded. And I think that there's opportunity to have those discussions on Thursday, and those don't require notice of motions because we, or for even us to see those motions in advance because those topics are on the agenda, and there are active debates going to happen on Thursday about the budget. And so I'm not in support of adding this to the agenda, though I anticipate that there will be discussions on this topic on Thursday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Isaacson. Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Chair. My understanding is very similar to Counselor Isaacson's. However, I do support the concept of having a discussion about the motions so that folks at the committee might be aware of new information that could impact how they think about this reconsideration on Thursday. I do believe when that topic comes up on Thursday, that the motion that I had made people aware of earlier and this motion are very similar in nature. And the rationale behind that comes from some information that should be shared, which is not at the adoption of agenda, but rather at a appropriate point in the agenda. So if council does not support putting it on the agenda, and they want to hear all of that information for the first time on Thursday and not have time to consider it, then I guess they could vote down adding it to the agenda. My preference would be to allow folks to express the information that they think is relevant to motions that will be made on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Elliott. And next is Counselor Southcott, followed by Counselor Isaacson. If Counselor Dought, did you have your hand up?
Well, I'm gonna follow the rules and speak at the end.
Okay, very good. So we have Counselor Southcott, followed by Counselor Isaacson.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question. If we did add this to the agenda, and if we did pass this as a resolution, and if it was found in the future to be in conflict with another motion that has been adopted already, would it be possible that that would then constitute it to be out of order retroactively? And, well, and then the results of that would be a nullification of one or the other. I'm just trying, I'm trying to see if we're possibly heading into a major mess here by the possible complication. And I do support Counselor Elliott's idea that I'd love to be discussing this as well at this meeting, but I don't see that we can make a decision on this safely right now.
Thank you. I'm gonna refer to the corporate officer one more time, and just for further, if we were to talk about this today, would that be in any way of violation to our?
Uh, well, you've heard my recommendation that this is, in my opinion, a reconsideration. Now, what your potential scenarios you're looking at, or anyone could always bring forward a, you know, if they don't think you're following your own rules, someone could, you know, bring an action against council. Ultimately, that goes through the courts. It's not, like, I'm not your judge, jury, and procedural executioner, so to speak. It's your council procedure bylaw. You're responsible for knowing it, following it, interpreting it collectively. That, so that's, that's the legal risk you're talking about, along with all the reputational risks that go along with that. But it's, you know, it's hard to say anything more specific because these things are always about the, what actually occurred and are very case-specific, other than, yeah, you, any decisions of council can get challenged through the courts on procedural grounds.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Counselor Isaacson.
Just a question of-
Oh, sorry.
Right, yeah.
No, I think, can just be on the list, please, Chair?
Yes, sir. Counselor Isaacson, sir.
A question of clarification. Counselor Elliott mentioned new information, and I know in our procedure bylaw, there is reference to, like, if you have information that is important to a decision, that that information is not withheld, that it's shared with council. Is this something that could be forwarded by email in advance? Like, I maybe threw the chair to staff. What is the procedure on sharing information and not waiting until a meeting to share it?
And, Mr. Chair, I see there's two questions, if I heard them correctly, that are parallel but not related to each other. The first question is what was raised by Counselor Dought, and that is before you right now. A second question is, do one or more of you have information you'd like to share with each other that's not this resolution before you, that has to do with what'll be on your agenda on Thursday? So those, to me, are two distinct questions, and you shouldn't mesh them into one decision. The decision before you right now, which was moved by Counselor Dought, is the motion and whether to add it to the agenda or not. Once you've decided that, if you have other information you wish to share with each other regarding items on Thursday's agenda, then that's, I think, a very different type of question to be discussing.
So, for everybody's information right now, we're talking about whether we're going to add this to today's agenda. That's step one. Counselor Southcott, you are next on list, but you've already spoken, unless you're gonna represent something else in terms of what you already brought forward.
I just have another question.
Dought hasn't spoken yet. Do you mind if I go to him first? Counselor Dought?
I've said before, I was hoping just to speak once, and let everybody else speak once, and reply, but if we're gonna go to multiple speakers, I'm gonna step in at this time again. I just want to reiterate that I think it's a good time to discuss this, okay? Frequently, council has discussed decisions that can only be made at council meetings, at committee of the whole meetings. Gives us an opportunity to discuss what's going on, and then move it along to have the issue dealt with at a council meeting. It, in my view, gets council an opportunity to think about it, to sound out each other's opinions, know where we're going, and try to get a reasonable way to move forward that thinks about all of the possibilities. We've done it before. You know, it may be a reconsideration. My concern is if this doesn't get on today's agenda, there might be some other reason to not put it on Thursday's agenda. There might be some other reason to use the rules of order to not have it discussed. And then my only, my only choice would be to vote against and to try to turn down all of the next steps in the procedure, in the financial plan bylaw, which could have us talking about the financial plan bylaw in May, if there are others who didn't agree it should be changed. So I'm bringing this forward, forward this motion because I think council should talk about it, can talk about it in committee of the whole, not make a decision because the final decision will have to be made by council. Seems to me a reasonable thing to do. I hope it'll happen. If it doesn't happen today, I'll do everything I can to make it happen on Thursday.
Thank you, Counselor Dought. And Counselor Southcott, you're next, followed, oh, followed by the mayor.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, this is the question. Is it possible to change the motion to a motion where we are simply discussing this motion instead of actually considering the motion so that there is no impression that we're, like, would there be a way of stepping back from this? And along with what Counselor Dought is suggesting, and the reason why I support doing that is actually having a discussion here so that then we could further the results of that discussion to Thursday, is because I would really like to have the discussion now instead of on Thursday, where we have to do everything. We, not only, we have the three readings of the-
Chair, the motion that's on the floor is to put this motion on the agenda as item 12 dot two. That's all the motion is.
Or discussion purposes only, correct?
No, it's to put the motion on the agenda as item 12 dot two. See what happens then.
Okay, so, Ted, clarify your question. It's like that's what is being asked here. So Mayor, go right ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I believe our corporate officer has said that anybody who wants to bring an amendment to the financial plan can do that on Thursday. So there's no issue in my mind as to whether or not a counselor can bring forward at that time. I would just ask our CO if that's correct.
Yes, there's nothing preventing this coming on Thursday as a reconsideration. So that's, my comments were about adding it to the agenda today.
Thank you, corporate officer.
And then as a follow-up, I would ask if at the end of our closed meeting, if all of council is interested in having a conversation about Counselor Dought's suggestion, would that be appropriate? Or would that be in keeping with our principles?
Well, if, just to keep in mind that if you've got quorum and you're discussing something that is advancing your business, you're having a meeting. So however you want to characterize that, you've got to be careful that you're not having a meeting when you're not supposed to be having a meeting. And open meetings need to be just that, open and available for the public to observe them. So it sounds a little bit, might get yourselves into a bit of issues, depending on, you know, the open meeting scheduled to start at, after, after the close, yeah, later this afternoon. I think that if council wants towards, sometime during the committee of the whole meeting towards the end, have a general discussion, I don't see that as a problem. I think if you're sharing information with each other, I think where, if, but if you're trying to advance reconsideration motions, then I think that's where you start to trip up on the procedure bylaw.
Okay, so Counselor Dought, do you have any further comments?
I just have to sneak one in, and I appreciate what the corporate officer is trying to do and the corporate officer's position. Questions of order, whether or not something is introduced and is in order, are questions to be decided by the chair, not the corporate officer. It's up to you to make a decision whether it's in order or out of order. It could be challenged one way or the other if people don't like what you decide. It's up to you to decide whether it is. But I just, I brought this motion because I thought it would be valuable to discuss it today. It would be better than leaving it till Thursday. I hope to get the support of council. But if that doesn't happen, you know, we will be able to take it in, in the normal course of events as things go on. It'll just be tighter timelines for everybody.
Well, just, if I may, clarify that one comment that Counselor Dought just made, and it's up to the chair to either call the vote or not call the vote at this point. Is that correct?
Yeah, just my earlier comments, the council procedure bylaw is yours collectively, and the presiding member is the one who makes the final decisions. I'm merely providing advice and recommendations at the end of the day.
Well, I'll just say where I sit on this as Chair, and that is, I've always settled all along that there's a purpose for a committee of the whole. Communication is very important, especially when you have a full council chamber that's gonna show up today, who have as much information related to the general public, or anything new has sprung on them at a council meeting, and that's been where I've been all along. So on this particular item, I don't think there's a need for discussion at the end of the closed meeting. I think we can call the vote right now whether we're gonna put this on the agenda today or not. So not hearing, seeing any further hands in the air, I'm gonna call the question, and that is, all in favor of adding Counselor Dought's motion to the open meeting today? Those opposed? Motion fails. Okay, so. George was the only one that voted in favor?
Cindy voted in favor.
And Cindy?
It's really him.
And I would have voted in favor too. So that was three votes. So it was a four-three split. Counselor Dought? Oh, you are in favor. Sorry. So I will change my mathematics here and suggest that we pass that motion on a four-three basis, and it will be added to today's agenda in the open. Thank you for that clarification, everyone.
If it pleases the Chair, you could call for a revote, just to make sure that everybody's where they should be.
I would like everybody to raise their hand either one way or the other on this vote. We will have a revote right now. So to add today's, this motion to today's open agenda, all in favor. Two, three, four, and those opposed. One, two, three. Vote passes. It will be on today's open agenda for discussion. Thank you very much. We've got through that component. Agenda. So, do I hear any further additions or deletions to today's agenda? Not hearing any, I'll call for the adoption of today's agenda.
As amended.
As amended. Moved by Counselor Isaacson. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. We will now go to the motion to close the meeting to the general public. Who would like to read them? Go ahead, Counselor Southcott.
Move that committee move into a closed meeting to discuss matters covered by the community charter sections 91A, personal information of an unidentifiable individual who holds or is being considered for a position as an officer, employee, or agent of the municipality or other position appointed by the municipality, see labor relations or other employee relations.
Thank you. All in favor? Those opposed? Unanimous. But we will now move into the closed meeting and under closed meeting. closed meeting and under closed meeting.
... to make sure that this is important for the members of the Klama Nation. And my wife Susan and I, we're the last 15 years have had a chance to meet with many of the young high school students, their parents and their grandparents, and understand the importance of this event for all of them. So I think we should all work together to thank Amtar and the Klama Nation for successfully concluding this agreement.
Thank you worship, and we hold up our hands to all that are not here, and we move this community forward together. And that's, that's a good thing. So having said that, thank you very much, Mayor Wasnow. And before we commence with public input, I'm going to call upon councils if they would like you to unanimously move up a motion that was put forward earlier today, so that we can discuss that for discussion purposes in order to get to see if this comes forward on Thursday or not. So council, do you all support moving up the motion from councillor Dowd on today's agenda? Is there anybody opposed?
Point of clarification, it's already on today's agenda, so you're talking about moving it up to earlier in the agenda?
Yes, that's correct.
To where?
Any opposed? Seeing none unanimous, we will move that up on today's agenda, and we will add it after general matters, and that's delegations, after consent agenda, and we will move it to item... Yes. You have a suggestion?
Well, I believe the reason for moving this up was councillor Elliot's time constraints today, as she's out of town. If I'm not mistaken, she's only gone till the top of the hour. So if we're going to move it up at all, I think it would need to be next, or slightly after public input, but my feeling is public input might eat up.
Yes, I think that's a good idea to move it up immediately since councillor Elliot's time is limited. So that's a very good idea. Councillor Almeida, all in favor, moving it up right away? Okay. And not having that on my screen, got to find it on paper, and the title of this motion brought forward by councillor Dowd earlier today is, whereas the Powell River Community Forest has been a positive contributor to the economic, social and environmental well-being of the city of Powell River for many years, I'm going to get councillor Dowd to read the rest of that motion.
Yeah, the rest of it's in smaller type. I've got my glasses on. So, and whereas the community forest has made a significant contribution to nonprofit societies in the city, which have had widespread positive impact on the community, and whereas the relationship between the city and the community forest has been a benefit to the greater community, therefore be it resolved that the 2025 community forest dividend and the contributions to city projects and to nonprofits be determined according to the same process that was used in 2023 and 2022, with the participation of the community forest working group recently appointed by council, and that the process for determining the dividends and contributions of the community forest for the years 2026 and following be determined in collaboration between the community forest board and the community forest working group and the city, and that the city of Powell River 2025 to 2029 financial plan bylaw number 2751 be amended accordingly.
Thank you councillor Dowd, there's no need to second, as our new procedure bylaw does not require that. So we have a motion on the floor. Who would like to be the first to speak? Councillor Dowd?
So I brought this motion because I think, I do, first off, I appreciate the contributions that are made by the community forest board and the work they've done over the last 16, 20 years, providing benefits to the community and to city projects as well. And I want to see that the nonprofits in the community are maintained in the way they are. I think that what's done by the nonprofits with the community forest grants in this community, make it what it is, and make it different than other communities, make it possible to have things that other communities just simply don't have. And it's because of the community forest and the people who live here who were volunteer in these projects supported by that. I think we need to be careful of that. I think this motion would put in force a program where we have the city's working group on the community forest, the community forest board, and council, all working together to come to an agreement that works for the entire city and everyone in it. I think we can do that over the next period of time. We don't have to reduce the contribution this year, which other motions might indicate we would do. I think we've got time to work with the board and with the community to get it right. That's why I'm making this motion. I hope council will support it. And just want to point out that we're at a committee of the whole. We can't actually enact this today. We can have the discussion and we can move it to when our financial plan is going to be on the agenda, which will be Thursday.
Thank you councillor Dowd, appreciate your comments. Councillor Elliot, you're next. Councillor Elliot, can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you Chair, just trying to get my mute off. First of all, thank you councillor Dowd for bringing this motion forward. I think it behooves us to explain a little bit about our parliamentary procedure and why we can't actually make decisions about this motion here today. The motion that's already been approved at the council level precludes us from making motions at the committee of the whole that are contradictory to the motion already passed by council. And so if we're to make changes to the draft budget that are different than what we've already had on the table, we need to do that at a council meeting. And so perhaps staff could add or let me know where I went wrong on that. But I do think it is a good idea for us to have this motion on the floor for discussion today, partly because the level of support in the community for making changes to that is really evident right now from all of the letters we're receiving. And the conclusion that I have come to around how we've so far done in our communications prior to getting to this point, it hasn't been adequate because we have not had the conversations that would have helped all of our relationships between the community forest board and council. Those are super important to me. I think they're important to our community. And I think it's important that we make in our decision while adopting a budget, that that relationship is paramount and important to our council. And we want to make sure that message is heard. So making decisions later after conversation is, in my opinion, paramount. And I, I feel really strongly in that. I think right now it would be great if staff could support us with information about the procedure for potentially making motions that would change that and how that is to be followed by all of us. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Elliot. Next, I'm speaking, we have councillor Southcott.
Sorry Chair, that was, sorry Chair, that was my asking for input from staff around procedures to help public and all of us make sure that we're moving forward in a good way.
Thank you. Mr Fleming, do you have a comment?
Just a general comment from sort of expanding on what we've discussed previously, just, you know, council will have the opportunity on Thursday to make amendments to the financial plan. And that's the opportunity at the council meeting for council to do that. And then once whatever changes you want to make are made, then the bylaw would be given three readings that reflect those changes.
Thank you, Mr Frang, that's pretty clear. Councillor Southcott?
Thank you Chair. So this is a pretty unusual conversation or discussion to be having at this point in view of the fact that the motion could only be presented, that is presented here by councillor Dowd, could only be presented as a motion should a motion to rescind another motion be passed. And that can't happen until Thursday because that's a council meeting and this is not. So that being said, what's significant about that to me is that, is that to me it represents the deep passion I believe this table has for transparency, and I think this is a proof of that. If we wanted to just do it the easy way, we would have simply deferred this to Friday. But this is not the easy way. That being said, there are significant considerations that have led us to this point. They involve fiscal challenge that the city is facing. I'm not going to go into the three really pertinent details, but it involves tax revenues, rising costs, pardon me, infrastructure needs, et cetera. The deepest element that's most important to me though, is that it was mentioned by councillor Elliot, and that is that communication has, I hate to use the word failed, but it hasn't been adequate. And for us to make decisions that have as profound influence, whether they're considering fiscal crisis, or whether they're considering the incredible social wealth that we have that's been supported by, by the community forest plus many other factors, those, that needs to be done as a community and together. So that is the reason why I have shifted my view somewhat to support, to support councillor Dowd's motion, should that be presented on Thursday. And that is what I wanted to state right now. Thank you Chair.
Councillor Southcott, councillor Isaacson.
Thank you Chair. So when we opened the meeting at 2:00 PM today, the reason that this motion is on the agenda is we had a discussion on whether to amend the agenda, and council decided to amend the agenda. And during that discussion, there was reference perhaps to like new information that it would be helpful for council or for members of council to know today rather than being shown that on Thursday. As other councillors have alluded to, it, this, these decisions would happen on Thursday when we decide whether or not to amend the financial plan. And so more discussions will be happening on Thursday about the budget, including how, how community forest dividends are implicated in the budget. And so if our intention isn't to, I'm, to be quite honest, I'm not actually sure what the intention of members of council or like councillor Dowd and councillor Elliot is, if the intention is to eventually refer this motion to council on Thursday, or not to, because it's on the floor right now, for referring this motion to Thursday, is there, is there other information that was intended to be shared now so that members of council could consider it leading up to deliberations on Thursday? I'm not clear what the reference to more information was when we were opening our meeting at 2:00 PM today, adopting the agenda. So I'm looking to, I think councillor Elliot was the one that made reference to that through the chair, but if we're not debating the motion and the intention is to refer it to Thursday, is there information that you wanted to share?
Thank you councillor Isaacson, that is a very good question. And I'm going to go to the individual that had his hand up first that moved the motion, that would be councillor Dowd, and then followed by councillor Elliot.
Oh, thank you for the question councillor Isaacson. But my intention and what I thought was important to bring this up today was to have a discussion among council to see if this might generally be the direction that council wants to go, to inform staff that council might go this way, so staff has an ability to provide answers to questions staff might, and council might have, or that the public might have when we talk about it on Thursday. And the other one was that I thought we might, would do the process that we've normally done in committee of the whole before, where we've discussed a motion and then council votes to move, to refer that motion or decision to council from the committee of the whole recommendation that council discuss it on Thursday. So that's the process. I'm thinking the new information would be information from people around the council table, whether they support this kind of a division or not, or whether they would support the existing motion, which is to limit the amount of contributions to nonprofits to particular percentages. So there's an opportunity for council to discuss it here, to let staff know what we're thinking, and to make a suggestion to council, that council debate this again on Friday, not have it come as a surprise, give everyone, the public and ourselves, an opportunity to think about what we're doing and make a solid decision.
Yes, and before we get to councillor Elliot, just point of clarification, as councillor Dowd has pointed out, at the end of this discussion, we will be taking a vote as to whether this moves forward on Thursday's agenda. That's the intent that we're dealing with right now. So go right ahead councillor Elliot.
Thank you Chair. I think that some of the conversation that might indicate where, whether council would like to or not like to head in this direction is part of the debate that has to happen on Thursday, and we can't really decide that here today. I think we do need to refer the motion to Thursday's discussion on the budget. So that procedurally is kind of what we need to do. What we can do is, as councillor Isaacson pointed out, bring forward information that we think is relevant for council. And I don't have the exact numbers that I think ought to be available for council off the top of my head. I could try to seek clarity on that between now and Thursday. I haven't managed to understand those numbers perfectly yet, but I do think that they should be available to council. And the, the, the numbers that we need are for options that council could consider as far as considering the motion on Thursday would as far as considering the motion on Thursday would be, what would be the impacts to tax requisition and the implications of making a decision and how we might provide direction to mitigate that or change that or have it be what council reflects. And so the information I would like to provide is, should we vote for, in favor of this motion on Thursday, what would the changes to the requisition be? And I don't, I don't have that off the top of my head today, and I wish I did. And then what are some ways that we could formulate the motion that would not have an impact on the requisition and what, what would that impact? It is my understanding that we could choose to put less money into savings for future projects for things like our rec center, pending the outcome of this conversations between the Community Forest and the city. And that could make it so our requisition does not have to change. But I have not had that verified, and so I don't want to say that that is precisely the information, but that is the type of information that I wanted council to be able to have. And so I'm hoping that is helpful.
Thank you, Counsel Elliot. Mayor Wasnow.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, I believe that our corporate officer had advised us that any motion relative to the 2025 capital budget can be brought forward on Thursday. And there's no need for any vote at the committee of the whole. Individual counselors can make that decision. And if they feel comfortable doing that, they can bring it forward. I think it's item 14 on Thursday.
Corporate officer, could you just clarify, is that correct? In terms of getting this on the agenda for Thursday?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, so, you know, earlier to reiterate, yeah, council has the opportunity to add whatever motions you want to add on Thursday with respect to changing and debating the implications of those changes. I think, I won't speak for the CIO, but this would be helpful for council to, for staff to have an idea of where council is heading, so you can have those answers for you on Thursday.
Thank you, Corporate Officer. Counsel Sotkott.
Thank you, Chair. I'm concerned that if we do, if we were to hold a vote on this, that this motion actually is out of order. And the, my concern is that if we were to refer a motion that is actually out of order to the Thursday council meeting, that there could, it could be challenged ultimately and found to be, and disqualified, which I don't really know where that would lead us, but I don't, I'm not interested in that happening. And what I am interested in is, and I think that is possible, is that if we were just to not vote on this, it could be reintroduced on, on Thursday's council meeting. But I'm not entirely sure if that is true. But I think it would be dangerous for us to vote on this motion here today.
Yeah, so I just want to clarify, when I said that in terms of a vote, I'm, I'm not voting for or against the motion. I'm simply trying to make sure that council is in agreement to bring this forward to Thursday's meeting. Counsel Isaacson.
Thank you, Chair. So I, I actually think that it sounds like the intention for Counselor Dowd is to vote on this motion today. My preference, as mentioned by Counselor Elliot, would either be to refer this to Thursday or as Counselor Sotkott maybe alluded to, is just withdrawing it from the table altogether. And again, on Thursday to have the discussion, which would require someone who voted in the majority on the previous dividend, Community Forest dividend motion, to make a proposal to rescind. So our, our procedures to rescind a previously passed motion at council are outlined in our procedure bylaw. I, I think that in, maybe the only motion that I think might make sense tonight is to direct staff to prepare the budget implications of Counselor Dowd's draft, Counselor Dowd's motion as well as Counselor Elliot's motion that's on the agenda for Thursday. There is a, a separate but similar or related motion related to Community Forest dividends. And so I can't make that motion. We have a different motion on the floor right now. But that would be one way to make sure that we have the information we need when and if, because I'm assuming it, it will, come up for discussion on Thursday. And so can't make that motion right now. But I, I don't want to make a motion to refer this motion or move to refer this motion to Thursday yet in, in case there are additional discussions that council wants to have.
Thank you, Counsel Isaacson. Counselor Dowd, do you want to shed some light on your motion and what your intent is?
Yeah, like, well, my intent is?
Or bringing it forward today?
I don't speak for everybody. I know what my intent is. My intent is to have an open and clear discussion about the priorities of the city for the Community Forest money and the priorities of the people in the city, while respecting the priorities of the Community Forest Board, whose contributions I deeply respect. My suggestion to the chair is that what we should vote on at the end of this discussion is referring this motion to the meeting on Thursday. For those who are concerned about the legality of that, if you give me a couple of days to study, I can come up with about six or seven motions this year that have done exactly that, move decisions from the committee of the whole to the council meeting. Final decision is made at the council meeting. No one has challenged any of those motions as being illegal over the years. I've been here for six years now. Counselor Sotkott's been here longer. Counselor Palm, I think, has been here longer than everybody. But, you know, I think we're safe in doing that. What I, I don't really want to have a battle of procedure and rules of order tonight. What I'd like to have is a discussion about the use of the funds of the Community Forest. And if we give, give staff at least the idea that we might be interested in following through with this, it gives our finance department staff the opportunity to come up with the numbers that we would all like to see. What difference will this make to everybody's pocketbook? How much am I going to have to pay in taxes if we do it this way instead of the other way? That's something I'd like to know about. I'd like to know about that way more than I'd like to know about the rules of order and the procedure bylaw.
Thank you, Counsel Dowd. Counsel Almeida.
Thank you, Chair. From what we've heard so far, the vote has to go to council anyways. And as the corporate officer says, because council has already made a decision on this, we need to first, forgetting the term now, rescind the previous vote, thank you. Rescind the previous vote that was done in order to bring this up for conversation as well. So I think through our conversation today, I know staff are listening and they're hearing all the thoughts and suggestions that are coming from council to probably have the information ready for us to clear up some questions and, and maybe create some more questions at the same time. So my one question to staff, I guess, if, if we're moving this vote to council, do we need to also request a vote on the rescinding to be on the council agenda?
Uh, no, you do not.
Thank you, Corporate Officer. Mayor Wasnow.
Just for clarification.
Followed by Counsel Elliot.
Thank you, Chair. Just for clarification, I believe I'm correct in that what Counselor Dowd has missed is that we've brought in a new procedure bylaw. So yes, years ago, you could have a motion, council of the whole, to refer something to council meetings. But with the changes in the procedure bylaw, that's no longer required. It's more efficient this way, and any counselor can bring forward whatever motion they want at the council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Wasnow. Counsel Elliot. You're muted or unmute?
Thank you so much, Chair, and thank you so much, everybody on the committee. I have very little time left. I think what's going to have to happen procedurally is this motion will have to be either tabled or referred to after potentially a motion on Thursday that allows it to proceed, which would be a rescind or reconsider or some such thing. I really loved the wording that Counselor Isaacson came up with as far as making a motion to ask staff to provide information about budget implications for the options that have been put forward by Counselor Dowd and myself. I don't have time to stick around and help with that at all. I will trust the committee, will want that information on Thursday and hope that we make progress on that. Thank you so much for allowing this conversation to happen, and I have to, I have to go. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Counsel Elliot, can you just hold on till we make a motion to take this forward on Thursday? Can you hold on just one moment? I'd like, I'd like to see you.
If you call the motion, if you call the question about moving it forward to Thursday immediately, I could vote. I don't have any time left.
Okay, so we are going to, as the chair, I am going to make that motion that we vote to move this forward to Thursday's council meeting. And if there's anybody that wants to make further comments after the vote, they can do so. So all in favor of moving this forward to the, and I'd like a show of hands, please, moving it forward to the Thursday agenda of council? Unanimous. Thank you. It will be moved forward. Now, Counsel Isaacson, you have a comment.
Yeah, well, actually, a point of clarification, when you say move, you, you just mean to refer this, the, the motion to the Thursday discussion, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I, I move that the committee directs staff to prepare budget implications of Counselor Dowd's and Counselor Elliot's Community Forest dividend-related motions for the, for the Thursday council budget discussions.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor, and we don't need a secondary comments. Anybody have any comments? I have one comment that I would like to make in that regard, and that is, we are still talking about the budget and the five-year plan. And those discussions are going to happen on Thursday. They're going to also happen on the 27th of this month. So it's going to be difficult for staff to come up with certain concrete numbers when we haven't even talked about further implications of what council would like to do to, on a cost-saving basis. So good luck to staff. It won't be easy without the necessary answers you need to do so. But we will call the question, because I don't see any other hands in the air, and all in favor of moving Counselor Isaacson's motion forward? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, now we can move on to today's agenda, and just let me bring up our agenda here. Come on. There we go. So we will now move to public input period. And I'll remind members of the public that we will start with three members of the public for two minutes each. And we will start with Mr. Roger Whitaker.
Good afternoon, council, and, pardon me. This is on legislative matters. Any reasonable person would have looked at today's agenda and saw the consent agenda was allowing for the adoption of a few minutes of past meetings, moving on to a letter after some presentations by the public. How shocked I was to see City of Powell River, Community of the Whole, live, pop up on my YouTube as I'm working away. So I turn it on. And they're not going in camera at 2:00. A motion gets put forward, and regardless of the importance of the motion, which nobody's going to debate here, a 26-minute meeting proceeded when it was supposed to be going in camera. And that could easily have been put forward. But on top of that, Mr. Fleming even warned y'all that you were having a meeting and the room is dark and there's no people here. And that's out of order, and it didn't shut down. And that's, I'm, I was stunned. I even called a couple of people and said, do you know they're having a meeting? No, no, it's in camera. I said, no, it's not. I'm stunned that that was permitted to happen in this chamber. That's not open and transparent at all.
Not sure if staff wants to respond, but I'm sure council would like to respond. Counsel Dowd, you can start.
I don't want to get in staff's way. I have an agenda too. And the agenda on my laptop says, number one, call to order at 2:00. Number two, adoption of the agenda. And the discussion you were happening, you're talking about, that 26-minute discussion, was in discussion of adding my motion that we just talked about to the agenda. That was a subject of some debate. That's what's on the agenda. The public could have been here. They weren't. People, people know that with our new procedure bylaw, we have a call to order. We approve the agenda, then we go into a closed meeting. Then we try to get the right time to reconvene after the closed meeting, which is 3:30. So that's what happened. Nothing's wrong with it, in my opinion. We, everybody was here, and you saw it on, on the public broadcast, wide open. And as Counselor Sotkott says, very transparent. Something we're going to get used to on the timing, but I think we'll get through it. And that is the explanation and my answer to your question.
Mr. Whitaker, that, that is precisely what happened, and everybody's getting accustomed to our new procedure bylaw. This is just one of the wrinkles that we have to overcome. But that's, as Counselor Dowd has stated, that's what took place today.
Thank you.
Now, we have anyone else from the gallery that would like to come forward for public input? Yes.
Um, just, so in the instructions, just for, again, our new procedure bylaw and getting used to things, there's three specific topics that we invite members of the public to speak on, legislative matters, committee recommendations, and new business. The only item that we have under those three items today is there's one item under new business. And so there's actually not a lot on the agenda today. There's a lot on the agenda on Thursday, but not a lot on the agenda today that aligns with the public input period description in our procedure bylaw.
So just to clarify for the public, in terms of Counsel Isaacson's comments, there was something, a motion added to our agenda today which would allow discussions on that agenda item or questions from the public to come forward. Mr. Fleming, isn't that the case?
If you, the committee wants to consider the motion as part of new business, then that would be the case.
Thank you for that. Please state your name and your address, please.
Catherine Yorifson. Before I begin, because I got called to order last time, in the amendment to the agenda, you made reference to the fact, in the second one, to the 2025 budget. Does that mean I can speak about that?
Our professor?
Just sort of repeat what I said previously. If council considers the motion as part of new business, then you can entertain public input on that. And I'll remind council that public input is not meant to be responded to. It's just meant to, you listen, say thank you, and then the next person comes up.
Thank you very much. Go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Okay. So the comment that I want to make is that I originally came to the information thing on the five-year plan and the budget. And in that, there was pages and pages and pages and pages of things that we wanted to put into the budget. And I felt that those pages did not really allow the council to, to sometimes understand the ramifications of any one of those, for example, vehicles. So I did take the time to go through those items. And for the ones that I felt were the most interesting, I've organized those into like categories. So for example, all the vehicles. And I did prepare that and I've sent it to the email address. And that means that each of you have received a copy of those figures that I took from that budget, organized in a different manner, which I hope will allow you to consider making some expenditure cuts. And in that document, I've put together the figures that came from the financial plan I was given, and then those where I feel cuts could be made. And I'd hope that you will look at that seriously, because if we can make those cuts, it does allow us to keep both our tax position down, our property tax costs down for 2025 and other years, as well as leave the community forest alone until that year of time where we could look at it more hopefully. So I hope you'll take the time to look at what I submitted and I will also ask them to put a printed copy in your mailboxes. So we can reduce the expenses if we wish to.
Thank you very much for those comments. Appreciate your due diligence and fine work. Anybody else from the gallery that would like to have two minutes? Anybody else in the gallery that would like to have two minutes? And for a final time, anybody else in the gallery that would like two minutes? Come forward, sir, and state your name.
Chad Honey. Just, you guys mentioned about giving staff members time to look at the implications of the community forests, debate kind of going on with property taxes and stuff like that. I was just wondering if during that conversation or that research that staff is going to do in the conversations on Thursday, if we could also be provided, if there's any ramifications of the community forest money being used for capital expenses and stuff like that with city and the taxes that the city would have to pay on those funds. Thank you.
So just to clarify your question a little bit, I think I've got the gist of it. Right now, according to the bylaw that our community forest works under, funds for the community forest and the trees that are sold are used for capital expenses, both nonprofits and city, if deemed appropriate. They're not meant to be used for general revenue or taxation or anything else to that effect. So that's according to our present bylaw. I hope that helps and clarifies your question. Counselor Isaacson.
Thank you, Chair. So I just would really implore council that we use the procedure bylaw that we just passed. I chose not to interrupt the three speakers that spoke tonight because I've been the subject of quite a few attacks for raising points of order. But according to our procedure bylaw, we, we added this public input period, not as a Q and A. Q and A is at the end of the meeting. It is intended for us to, to hear input on topics that are on the agenda. And I know that on Thursday, it's going to work to a T because we have really juicy items on the agenda that people want to talk to, and that's absolutely the place for them to be spoken to. I can imagine the will of council existing to extend it beyond the three speakers that's within our procedure bylaw. But I, I just have to say, it is very frustrating to consistently be the person who raises points of order to try to get council to follow our procedures of business. We're a legislative body and it is so, so frustrating to feel that I'm often the one who is pilloried because of my desire for us to follow the course of business. I don't want to, my intention is to not open a debate on it, but it's just to implore council, please, we have as a group adopted a procedure bylaw. Can we please, as a group, enforce it among each other and not rely on staff? We know our procedure bylaw or we should know it. Can we please work together to function as a council and do our business according to the procedures that we have agreed upon? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Isaacson. I will just state that the procedure bylaw is brand new to all of us and we are working our way through the new procedure. And at the same time, we are looking to make changes to that procedure if need be. So that's where we are in the process on procedure bylaw. Thank you for your comments and we will move on since we've had three speakers on today's agenda. Now, we move to 7.1, which is general matters. And the first delegation is the Cathat Outdoor Recreation Users Group Regarding Community Could you just state your name, please?
Hillary Marsiniak. Today I'm speaking on behalf of the many volunteers who dedicate their time and energy to the development, maintenance, and enhancement of our community's trails and recreational amenities. My name is Hillary Marsiniak and I am the representative of the Outdoor Recreational User Groups Trail Society, better known as ORUG. I would like to emphasize the immense value of the nonprofit organizations like ours, the importance of volunteer engagement, and the tremendous contribution that Powell River Community Forest has made to our region. ORUG was officially created in 2014 and became a working group to allow for open communication between the numbers of partners such as Community Forest, Bitcham Forest Products, BCTS, BC Parks, and multituded nonprofit organizations. Engaging in consistent communication allows our organizations to build trusting relationships and ensure all perspectives are heard. This communication is crucial as it enables us to find balanced solutions. How does the city council attempt to rebuild these relationships with these volunteer organizations, especially Community Forest? ORUG has worked hard to create a clear mission to develop, manage, and sustain a multi-use network of trails and recreational amenities that benefit the public in collaboration with community partnerships. Through this mission, NPOs have worked tirelessly to build world-class amenities that not only attract tourism, but also serve as vital spaces for locals. These amenities are also enticing new community members who are looking to settle in Powell River, much who are families and working professionals. The importance of the volunteer hours is essential in, in this entire conversation. The work that has been accomplished by nonprofit organizations has helped create the maintain, helped create and maintain trails, develop recreational spaces, and establish a sustainable network that has been accompanied by the donations by Community Forest. It is in the best interest of the city to continue to maintain the strong connections with NPOs and Community Forest. If we look at the value of dollar for dollar, when you give an equal amount of money to a nonprofit project as you give to a city-funded project, the nonprofit volunteers will make the money go further. The ratio of cost to community benefit is much more favorable to not, to nonprofit organizations. This means a greater benefit of the community at less of a cost, allowing volunteers to feel proud, proud and invested in community projects. The volunteers that are here today, such as the Bomb Squad, have given 1,200 volunteer hours in 2024, QPOS 3,300 volunteer hours, QRCA 3,500, PR ATV Club 400 volunteer hours, Backcountry Horsemen 200 volunteer hours, The Knuckleheads 1,678 volunteer hours. All together, these nonprofit organizations built and maintained trails to a total of 10,248 volunteer hours. We need to remember, this is only the documented volunteer hours and, and the ones that are selected here. So being born and raised in Powell River, I'm grateful for Community Forest and the special capital projects they continue to find year after year. When I look at the individuals serving the Community Forest Board, I recognize how fortunate we are to have these professionals with deep knowledge in the forest industry, from registered professional foresters to road builders, loggers, and accountant. These volunteers contribute their expertise and ensure that the decisions are made for long-term benefits of the community. This board is a well-rounded team that understands the intricacies of forest management. So does city council really expect this group of volunteers to remain committed to this board if the city is not allowing their voices to be heard or valued? In conclusion, does the city council truly expect that these nonprofit organization boards that are filled with experienced and highly educated individuals who have a passion for providing this community with enriching experiences to volunteer their time to benefit the city? I urge city council to look deeply and begin to rebuild your communication with the Community Forest Board. The decisions you make now will have a lasting impact on this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marsiniak. Very much appreciated. Counsel, do you have any questions of Ms. Marsiniak? Ms. Marsiniak, could you just come forward, please? And in terms of the delegations, we're allowed to interact-
I did know that.
-with the delegates. So I just want to say, having known you from a very young age, how impressed I am with your presentation today. It just makes my heart sore. So having said that, thank you very much. You are dismissed. Next delegation. Ms. Kim Barton Bridges, Regarding Proposed Community Forest Bylaw Change.
Thank you. So yeah, my name is Kim Barton Bridges. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time today and for your service. Prisma is thrilled to have received funding from Community Forest for the Arts Hub, a 5,000-square-foot performing arts and cultural hub within the Townsite Market. This innovative space will address the pressing need for shared resources and facilities among smaller arts and cultural organizations in the Cathat region while fostering artistic innovation, collaboration, and sustainable growth. A few years ago, Community Forest funding was instrumental in unlocking the matching funds required for a BC Arts Council Arts Infrastructure Grant for Prisma, which covered the full cost of padded black musicians' chairs. These chairs have become a staple at Evergreen Theater, benefiting the entire community. They've been used for countless performances, events, and even the occasional all candidates meeting. Recently, BC Finance Minister Brenda Bailey presented the provincial budget, which included investments in mental health and long-term care. However, it notably lacked dedicated funding for hospice and palliative care services. This omission is particularly concerning, given that over 45,000 British Colombians are affected by loss each year, with many relying on these essential services. In our region, the lack of funding is even more pronounced, with 0% of the provincial health budget allocated to hospice services. Fortide's Hospice Society relies heavily on donations, fundraising efforts, and grants to provide vital hospice care and services to individuals nearing end of life and their loved ones. With palliative care accounting for less than 3% of the provincial health budget, the need for fundraising is clear. Last year, close to 300 community members accessed the service of Fortide's Hospice Society. They face extremely challenging circumstances related to nearing end of life, bereavement, and caregiving. Hospice volunteers generously donate their time, contributing nearly 4,000 hours in 2024, equivalent to a staggering $74,000 in unpaid service. Hospice employees, passionate for the cause, accept lower salaries than they might receive elsewhere. Hospice organizations operate on extremely tight budgets, yet still manage to provide exceptional care and support. Hospice boards bring their valuable expertise and time to the table without compensation. The requests for services increased by 23% last year, and yet our staffing complement remind unchanged, remained unchanged due to lack of sufficient funding. 1.6 full-time equivalent employees run the society. We have no core funding. Each grant we apply for covers, on average, one month of our operational costs. We are actively working to support our community in building a much-needed hospice building. Although VCH will provide staffing for the hospice house, the financial burden of construction will fall on the community. Securing charitable donations will be an uphill battle in our small community, and losing access to a local funder like Community Forest would significantly exacerbate the challenge. A few years ago, child youth and family faced a financial crisis that threatened their existence. However, a Community Forest grant proved to be a lifeline, enabling them to survive and thrive. Through partnerships, they expanded their reach, developed new programs, and empowered parents. The grant transformed unused classrooms into a vibrant space for families, including a parenting library and meeting spaces. It also enabled the creation of the Youth Resource Center, connecting young people with support and friendship. Community Forest played a significant role in the restoration work at the Patricia Theater, funding the replacement of the lost exit stairs from the balcony and the replica of the original canopy. Over a few years, Community Forest's matching funds empowered 100-plus women who care to make a profound impact. With approximately 100 women donating $50 each meeting, Community Forest's match transformed these contributions into a staggering $10,000 windfall for numerous organizations. 23 recipient organizations and 41 runners-up, a diverse sampling of the not-for-profit sector, benefited from these matched donations, receiving significant boost to their initiatives. The excitement at meetings was palpable as contributors saw their $50 donations double to 100, creating a powerful incentive to participate. The backbone of our community's vibrant social fabric is the tireless work of local organizations, fueled by the selfless contributions of volunteers. From supporting addiction recovery and youth sports to assisting our communities most vulnerable, providing access to exceptional musical events and expanding recreation opportunities, these organizations make a tangible difference in the lives of our residents. Volunteers are the unsung heroes, donating their time and energy to amplify the impact of financial donations. Their labor of love is the catalyst that transforms funding into meaningful outcomes. The ripple effect of Community Forest support extends far beyond financial benefits and economic drivers, fostering a culture of compassion, inclusivity, and community spirit. That's why it's essential to allow Community Forest to continue their vital work uninterrupted and unimpeded. 11-year-old Asha, who enjoys climbing and biking with her family on Mount Mahoney, said it best in her letter to Mayor and Council, when she wrote that she would not have been able to do some of the things that make me, me, if it weren't for Community Forest, and asked Mayor and Council to please not change how the Community Forest funds our community. Please, please, with a cherry on top. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barton Bridges. You're only just a few seconds over minutes. So any questions?
I, I don't actually have a question. I just want to say thank you for coming. I was talking to somebody earlier today about my expectations of a large number of people appearing at council and the person said, well, they knew there was this discussion about the Community Forest, but they don't really know the details of the impact and the dollar values and things like that. So thanks for coming and sharing the information about the impact that you've had here and I hope a lot of people are listening. I know a lot of people watch our broadcasts and I hope people pay attention to the information you were sharing about the building blocks, how the grants end up being built on by other grants, making a huge difference to the community. So thanks for coming and saying what you did.
Ain't no other hands in the air. Ms. Barton Bridges, I just want to say thank you for sharing your perspective on all the organizations, cultural aspects, and all the rest that you brought forward today because it just complements the previous speaker and allows everybody to see the far-reaching reach of our Community Forest. Thank you very much. Thank you. So next on the today's agenda, we have one last delegation and that is, let me bring it up, Mr. Brent Williams, Top Out Climbing Co-op, Regarding the Benefit of the Community Forest Grant. let me bring it up, Mr. Brent Williams, Top Out Climbing Co-op regarding the benefit of the Community Forest Grant.
My name is Brent Williams. I'm representing the Top Out Climbing Co-op. I think that the presence here in this room today can say a lot more than I'm going to, but I'll do my best. I'm here on behalf of Top Out Climbing Co-op to express our deep concern over the proposed bylaw changes that would result in loss of Powell River Community Forest funds, which are a vital lifeline for our growing community. These funds have been instrumental in helping local nonprofits like our Climbing Co-op grow, engage the community, and enhance the Cathet region. If the city votes to change these bylaws and reduce nonprofit funding, our Climbing Co-op will be significantly impacted. Decreasing the funds we receive from grants will severely limit our ability to fund special projects that have been imperative to our growth. As a small nonprofit organization with limited revenue, we rely on grants and funding to assist in our continued efforts to grow and serve more of the Cathet region. The Top Out Climbing Co-op is a nonprofit indoor facility driven in our mission to provide a thriving, community-led space where families, youth, and individuals can exercise and connect through a shared passion: rock climbing. With a strategic growth plan and significant support from motivated volunteers, we have created a vibrant, engaged space for our community. New arrivals to the Cathet region are often attracted to the beauty of the area and the vast wilderness available to explore. In addition to providing an indoor space to exercise, the co-op serves as a launchboard for people pursuing outdoor adventures. Our co-op is akin to a coffee shop, where outdoor enthusiasts can meet, climb together, and plan their next adventure. Since opening in December 2018, we have served thousands of unique users. Additionally, groups such as the School District, Climination, Sea Cadets, and others rent the space for their students and members. As such, the Climbing Co-op has become not just a space for dedicated climbers, but the community as a whole. The Community Forest funds are a major contributor to the existence of the co-op. These funds were foundational to our startup, allowing us to secure a location, build the climbing walls, order holds to climb on, and mats to keep us safe. If the proposed bylaw changes were in place when we were first trying to open our doors, our co-op would not have been able to open at all. As our membership has grown, so too has our facility, with the support of Community Forest. At the request of our community, we added a weight room to our facility, which added more value to our members. We also added a new specialized climbing wall called the Kilter Board. This wall thrilled our community, increased membership, and encouraged a new level of training and excitement within our small space. The Community Forest funds not only have a direct impact on our projects and growth, but they have noticeable knock-on effect with our volunteer hours. As our community sees that we are continually making efforts to grow our services and improve our gym, they respond in turn by donating their time and highly specialized skill sets. Every dollar that Community Forest contributes to us is given back to our region exponentially. Volunteer root-setting alone has accrued $105,000 worth of donated time over the last seven years. The significant contribution from our community would not be possible were it not for Forest Funds that allowed us to improve our facility and engage our community. We also employ four people from the community, which is another direct benefit to and from the gym. We ask the city and council to reconsider the proposal to change the bylaws around the Community Forest funding system. Please do not reduce the money designated for nonprofit organizations. The Community Forest should not be considered part of the city's general revenue. It is a reserve standalone fund with a defined purpose and should not be used to fund city operations or capital expenses with the budget proposed. Preserving the original intention of the Community Forest Fund ensures that current and future projects that serve the Cathet community will have full access to funding. These projects are the cornerstone of local well-being, offering a unique resource for those in this region. This in turn will continue to foster the vibrancy and resiliency of our local community that our region has become known for. I'm not a local. I moved here about seven years ago. Counselor Dow said that there is something special about this place, and having lived in half-dozen communities before this, there absolutely is. The Forest Fund is one of those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any questions of council? Seeing none, I would just want to thank you for your fine presentation, and we really appreciate you stepping forward today.
Thanks.
Oh, we will now move forward on today's agenda, and because this is a new procedure, I just want to let everybody know that we are now at Item 8, Consent Agenda. And this is, "Council may vote on and adopt in one motion all recommendations appearing on the consent agenda. A member may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately for any reason and without debate." So we have three items on the consent agenda. And Counselor Isaacson.
Yep, I move adoption of the consent agenda.
Okay, and Counselor Dow.
No seconding required.
Okay, no seconding required, but they're seconded anyway, and all in favor. unanimous.
Sure. I'm thinking that we're at a bit of a change here in the business, and a lot of people might have intended to discuss the Community Forest and other things. So maybe we should take a five-minute break and like save us being disturbed.
I think that's a good, good idea. With council's consent, we will adjourn for five minutes.
Recession.
Recession. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out today. Appreciate everyone's input. We will reconvene our meeting and, you know, oh, we've got to wait for the mayor here. We're going to wait one minute until the mayor can rejoin the table. Free to talk until he returns.
Well, his paper and his phone are still there. One of your previous students, that young lady?
They're closing.
Work with her down. Give me our gear. Goodbye, Eric.
It was my heart.
That was obvious.
Your dad's passed away.
Anyway, we are going to reconvene, and we are going to move to Item 12, New Business. And we have 12.1, A Letter Received February 28, 2025, from Kim Markle, Executive Director of Lift Community Services Regarding Cathat Emergency Shelter Closure. Yes, right ahead, Counselor Isaacson.
Thank you, Chair. I asked staff to remove this from correspondence and put it on the agenda because I would love to hear from staff on any city-related solutions as an interim measure. So just for the community's awareness, and in case you haven't read this press release, the shelter, the emergency shelter, which has 20 beds, is their location, their lease is up, and they are closing on March 26. And while we have, there was a council motion that we passed giving B.C. Housing notification that we are willing to let them investigate the Barnett site for temporary emergency shelter and long-term permanent affordable housing. That's kind of like, it'll be temporary, but it's not going to be in place by, within six days from now. And so I, uh, so maybe I'll start with a motion to start the discussion going. I move that the committee directs staff to report back to council. I'm just sending what I've got already to Ms. Walls and it looks like Ms. Spudges, not on the call, but Ms. Wells, so that the committee, hey, where'd you go? The committee directs staff to report back to council on city-owned buildings, bare land, or parking lots that may be suitable as an interim measure for emergency sheltering, whether portables or, or a sanctioned spot for services to be provided. whether portables or a sanctioned spot for services to be provided.
And so to- We have a motion on the floor. You want to speak to that further?
Yeah, I want to speak to that further. I know that Lift has been working very hard to secure a new spot for the shelter, and they have not been successful, and there's going to be a gap in services. And what I anticipate this resulting in is impacts for a number of different segments of our population. So obviously, people who have relied on the shelter, apparently, as of a couple weeks ago, I think there have been 56 unique individuals who have used shelter services. And so those people will have to find different arrangements to sleep overnight. And for some people, that may mean sheltering in places that are just not very suitable, not healthy, and are a risk to their health and their dignity. And so that concerns me. I also can imagine that the, as people seek shelter in unconventional places, that could result in impacts. For example, we've seen accidental fires happen in our forests. We see people using private property to shelter or to use a toilet, and that's not preferable to anyone either. And so my intention for this is just to understand if there are city sites that could be appropriate as kind of an interim measure, like a temporary, before the temporary can happen. And I know that in working towards a warming center, city staff already did a bit of work to find any suitable inside locations that suited the needs of emergency sheltering or warming centers. And so they may already have that at hand, but also bare land or parking lots that might be able to place, you know, BC Housing has talked about those portable units. We do have portable, we have a portable shelter and washroom building currently at the public works yards that could be moved. And there may be people who are looking for a place to use a washroom where they're allowed to and access other services and have a sanctioned spot for those things to happen. So I want to see if this, if there are suitable places that could be part of the solution. And any decision on the use of those things would come back to a future council meeting. But I do want, I would, ideally, like this committee to direct staff to report on any options, yeah, any options that involve the city being part of that solution in an interim basis.
Just to clarify your motion before we have other questions, when you refer to committee to come back with recommendations, which committee are you referring to?
So that this committee, we're a committee of the whole, that we direct staff to report back to council. So council can make a decision on, you know, there will likely be financial implications or risk or legal implications. And so we would need to make an informed decision on that. And this would start the ball rolling in giving them direction to be able to pursue, or not pursue, but explore if there are suitable city options.
Got it. Thank you. So we have a speaking order. We have Counselor Dope, followed by Mayor Wasnow.
And, no, I think it's an extremely important thing that's happening basically in a week from now. It's not some distant time in the future, and a lot of, a lot of time to get ready for this is already past. So really, next week, we're going to have a group of people that are sheltered now. They're not going to be sheltered then. We're going to have to, they're not going to disappear. They're not going to get on the bus, because the bus doesn't exist, and go to Vancouver or some other place. And Vancouver says the same thing we would say, don't bus people here. So there are people in our community that are using the shelter now. Shelter is going to cease to exist. The people that are running the shelter have been looking for appropriate places that they could rent or lease or find access to in any way. And now they're appealing to the city for locations. And I think we had better be as diligent as we can, because the people who are in the shelters are going to go somewhere else in the community. And I don't want to express where those places might be, but I think if we could find a shelter of any kind, it would be a better thing than just having people going and trying to find shelter on their own wherever they can. I thought there were a few more words that talked about what kind of buildings might be suitable in the motion, but I'm prepared to support the motion as it is. Getting a report to council on city-owned buildings, bare land, or parking lots may be suitable and seeing what staff comes up with. I think it's an important issue. We can't just leave it alone and hope for the best.
Thank you, Counselor Dope. Appreciate your words. Mayor Wasnow?
Thank you, Chair. So the city owns 160 properties. And since November of '22, I've been urging council to look at the report that the city paid $40,000 for, which distilled 160 units down to 25. It carefully laid out the potential that those properties could be used for. Had we decided to utilize just one of those properties, it could have included in it a number of requirements, including shelter. And so I'm going to urge council, go back and look at the 160 properties, read the report, and be ready to make a decision, because we have not made a decision yet. Thank you.
Mayor Wasnow? Counselor Almeida?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not opposed to the motion, but I guess a quick question for staff, because I feel like Lift and staff have had many conversations already leading up to this point, since Lift has known about this date for about nine months, I think. So while staff may not have directly reported, and maybe it's just putting the Ts together and the Is dotted or something, but most of this information is ready. Like, I think we've already exhausted all the options?
Through the chair, staff did work with Lift when this was first becoming an imminent possibility under some different leadership. And at the time, we didn't come up with a building, which was the preference at the time, that suited both their needs and was in a suitable condition. So in terms of all the possibilities, I would say we have not, because it shifted a little bit to now looking at bare land. Now, council knows that you've been approached and you've given BC Housing the option for Barnett Street, but that's not going to come about fast enough. So that's where all of those conversations resulted. So there is the opportunity for us to come back and say, okay, while we may not have buildings, here is a range of sites council could consider within certain proximity of services. A whole set of parameters that you may decide are important for this. And we would, of course, engage Lift, because there's no point suggesting things that are wildly out of the realm of possibility if they are the ones selected to operate it. So I'd say there's a step again, because we've now got this gap despite the one piece of property being in the mix. Thank you.
Thank you, C.A.L. Counselor Dope?
I just, I just have to add that, you know, this is different than looking at city-owned buildings. It's about looking at city-owned buildings, bare land, and parking lots, and having a report from staff on what we could do. This includes what the mayor was just talking about, of whether we want to sell or lease any land. And it, and it includes what we might do with that bare land or the parking lots or the buildings. I think it's a big ask. It's a big, it's not, it's not a small thing we're asking staff to report on. It doesn't have small implications. But I think it's important, just on the break, talking with Counselor Southcott about the people in need of our, in our community, the people who aren't privileged and well off and don't have access even to shelter, and are going to have less access to shelter next week than they do this week. And I think we need to do something about it. And I think this report that we're asking for from staff would maybe get us somewhere down the road. And I think there's going to be a gap, one way or another. I would like that gap to be as short as possible, because it's going to impact the community when it happens.
Thank you, Counselor Dope. Counselor Southcott?
Thank you, Chair. I want to acknowledge that our city has done a lot over the years. We even had a share in a social planner, a social planning and action committee that we funded to the tune of about two-thirds of its cost, I believe. We've done a lot of other things, but fundamentally, this is a scenario that I think many of us who have been watching this for years feared. And we're at this point now. So I, I recognize that this motion addresses an emergency, essentially. I'm hoping that the weather gets warmer, because people are in tents and people are going to be outside. And that is going to have an impact, a greater impact than anything that people have noticed so far on our community at large. That's what I expect, having had decades of experience working with the population that is unhoused in my previous career. So from an emergency standpoint, only so much can be done. That being said, fundamentally, I believe that it is a community, community's responsibility, and that means municipality, for community safety. And we're doing everything we can as far as housing, et cetera, goes as well. It's a very large topic. And I hope that there are some opportunities that we can embrace when council, when staff brings us back, what they might bring us back into this resolution is asking for.
Last comment, Counselor Isaacson?
Thank you. Just wanted to reiterate two things. One, one I have already forgotten. I didn't write it down. The second was going to be just a piece of information for the community that kind of related to the closure of the shelter. Lift is doing a supply drive on Monday, the 24th, at CRC, where you can drop off tents and sleeping bags and other outdoor survival supplies, because this is unfortunately the reality. I think, I think the first thing that I was going to say was, I know we're living in a time where there are a lot of struggles and a lot of the things that have traditionally been done by, by the province and our nonprofits have, have put pressure on municipalities. And so I think the easiest way to help us get to a solution of an interim nature is to offer what we do have, and that can be used, which is potentially building bare lands or parking lots, and hopefully, again, be a part of the solution. Thank you.
Counselor Isaacson? So we're going to, we have a motion on the floor. I'm going to call the vote. All in favor. Unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone. And we move through to the end of our agenda, because we have no late items, and we have notice of, no notice of motion, and we need, before we adjourn, to hear any questions that the members of the public may have. You state your name. You have a maximum of two minutes.
My name's Briann. I just want to make note that on November 12, it was well aware that the shelter was closing, and we're now at the deadline of trying to find a place. Other agencies are willing to house the shelter. Landlords aren't willing to rent to Lift for a shelter, and they've been very open about that on their Facebook.
Sorry, who has?
Lift has been very open on their Facebook page that nobody will rent to them. So we may need to look at a different provider to provide shelter until that building's up. There was seven Lift employees here last week for a presentation. There's nobody here today from Lift. So do they really care?
Counselor Isaacson?
Yeah, I can't answer on behalf of Lift. Yes, the, knowing that the closure of, or the having to move from their site has been known for a long time. I know, I have a sense of the efforts that they and BC Housing have gone to to attempt to secure another site. And, and speaking on, speaking from my information of the Kathat Coalition and homelessness, trying to secure space for a warming center, there hasn't been a lot of interest from other agencies to pick up some of the work. But if there are, I would love to hear from them directly and help bridge conversations. So if you know of agencies who are willing, please come and talk to me. And happy to help facilitate those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next?
Catherine Yorlovson, it's me again. I'm, I may be out of order, and I'm not sure, okay? But you guys introduced the budget. So if I'm out of order, I apologize. And you should-
I think I will preemptively, maybe, because we, the budget wasn't on the agenda tonight. The budget's on Thursday night.
No, but you raised the budget, and that's why you allowed me to speak to it earlier.
I know. I didn't raise a point of order, because I was being generous. The topic that was raised was the community forest dividend.
Did we not ask the, this gentleman here, and he said it was okay?
To speak to the motion that was brought forward, which was the community forest dividend-related motion. Yeah. So, yeah. Thanks for being kind, Catherine. Sorry, I'm not chair.
By this, I waited to the end. I think I got procedure straight.
Please state name.
Todd Phillips. This is just clarification, if I can get it, that if things change with the bylaw, that our existing community forest grants are still going to be honored, the contracts we have?
Yes.
Okay. We, just an update with Power vs. SAR. We are, we're just waiting for the weather to change. We can paint the outside of the building, and the grant is finished, the first grant. But we need that 36% kickback to finish the second grant, or we don't have that kind of cash. Then there's one other. This is just my own personal, if you don't mind. If the new bylaw passes, is the money still going to be kept for capital projects? Or is it just going into general revenue?
Counselor Dope, would you like to respond to that?
I just want to respond to both your questions. The first one is, I think, was about previously approved grants. I think those are grants that were approved in '22 and '23 and '24 and '25. There might be even some that are older than that. But my understanding is all of those grants have already been approved. Funding exists in the reserve, and when the projects get done, they'll be funded. That's my understanding. A lot of people are asking that question. And your other question was, what does the budget do to existing conditions? Okay, we've got two things that have to be determined yet. One is the budget, and the other one is, we've got together a working group that's going to be working with the community forest, both changing the bylaws. And it's hard to guess what might come out of that. I think we have to wait and see for the process to unfold and see what happens.
Okay, just thank you, Counselor Dope. Counselor Isaacson, you have a comment?
Yeah, just a response to the second part of your question was, would it go into general reserves? No, it would not. We currently have a bylaw that governs the reserves that talks about special projects of, and I don't know the exact wording off the top of my head, but special projects of benefit to the general community that are not a part of regular operations or, or capital improvements of a regular nature. I don't have the exact wording in front of me, but it does not go into general, general revenue.
Hey, thank you. I'll see you Thursday.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Carolyn Jackson. On two comments, the first one being the shelter. I've spoken with a few people that have been at the shelter and in the last few weeks choose not to stay there. They don't feel safe. And they are hoping to have housing where they feel safe. And they don't feel that Lift is supportive of them being safe. And that's just from them, and that's their experience. The other one is, has the council considered that if they change the bylaw to be 90%, 10% for nonprofits? to be 90%, 10% for nonprofits, that the current community forest board would step down? And we would have nothing. Another thought I've had is, if the city changes the bylaw, will the regional district want to come and get their 45% of the 90%? Just something to consider.
Mayor Wasnow?
First of all, I would be surprised if any board member would step down, you said.
Microphone, Mayor? Closer to the microphone.
This year, there's going to be $440,000, which Community Forest can use to fund projects. So they want to step down and have new board members come in and distribute big recommendations on those $440,000. I'm sure there's people in the city that will come forward.
Counselor Isaacson?
Thank you. I think there's, in response to your comment about the regional district, I think there's some misinformation about the regional district kind of owning part of the community forest. So it's, the regional district has, as a government, has no involvement with the community forest. And when the community forests were created in the mid-2000s, my understanding was the regional district chose not to, chose not to participate. And so the regional district, or so the, the community forest is completely under the realm of the city. And while some grants have been made to regional district projects, they are not involved at all in the governance or ownership of the Powell River Community Forest.
But couldn't they go to the province and ask for partnership in it?
Again, the city is the 100% shareholder and owner of the Powell River Community Forest. Thanks.
Thank you. And before we get to anybody else in the gallery, I am remiss in not inviting Mr. Galinsky to come forward with his questions from the press first. Sorry, Mr. Galinsky.
Thanks for the opportunity, Chair. Just a quick question. During opening remarks from Mayor Wasnow, he was alluding to the acquisition of lands by Klammon Nation. And I and several other people heard old golf club lands. And we were wondering if that indeed was part of the acquisition, or whether that was not the case.
I should have said the old mill site lands.
I thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering about that. Thank you very much for the clarification. That was my question, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Galinsky. Thanks for clarifying that. I was thinking of the same thing. So is there anybody else in the gallery that wishes to come forward? Seeing none? I think the next item. Oh, sorry, is there anyone online? Someone online. Okay, so that brings us to adjournment.
Don't need a motion?
Don't need a motion. We are adjourned at-